I guess I'm going to break.
I was breaking at 6:30.
No, Kyle, Kyle, okay. You guys started talking too much. I tried to turn it off as much as I could.
A bar? A little bar?
Is that better?
That's my turn.
Okay, can everyone hear? Okay. I was trying to crank it up as loud as I could and we got feedback. We're calling the Newport City Council meeting in order for Monday, October 21st, 6:30 PM. Municipal Building Chairman, All Management Capsule Present. Others include James Johnson, our Third Treasurer, and Lauren Logan, our City Manager. The next item will be to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2019. And our identity motion. The motion is made, deserve a second. The motion made in second, discussion on the minutes of October 7th, 2019. Then all those in favor say aye. Both ayes have it, motion here it. The next item is comments by members of the public. We have one person who's signing up for a non-ATV issue. And it's called the New York Ortiz. It's referencing non-licenses.
Is this on? Excellent. So, I told you I, and I'm going to talk about ATVs. You're welcome. So if this city gives one shot about people that live in this community, it will put ATVs out for a vote, March 2020. That's for our work. Two steps back. In the end. Take two steps back.
Okay, moving on to the next item. This is about the ATV ordinance and a vote. In order for us to discuss this, we will need a motion.
While citing the motion for the ordinance of the year 2020 for that ATV designated Newport City Streets as presented in Newport City Council meeting on 9/16, which also would contain curfew of 10 a.m. and, excuse me, 10 p.m. and 8 a.m.
A motion was made, is there a second to that motion? The motion was made in seconded. Now I will open it up for a discussion.
I didn't hear a motion, can you hear me?
I didn't hear anything in a motion that said anything about the ordinance being limited to one year. And I know it's in the draft ordinance, that is not stated. So are we talking about permanent or a one-year ordinance?
It would be one-year broadened ordinance, so we would get an amendment to that. So it would be, so if I can speak, it would be to be...
We can't hear you!
Yes, I was asking if the mic, if you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, the motion was made about that one year piece of legislation invented to include that. And so the ATV, city representatives really got a hold of it. So somebody wants to make an amendment to the motion to include that term? Would be May 20, May 2020 to October 2020. Which would be trial period.
Does someone want to make that motion an amendment?
So Kevin?
Alright, probably gives a hell of a number, that's alright, we'll get by. Kevin is withdrawing his second. Melissa will choreograph first and make the new motion.
So, for breakfast. And the motion for the ordinance of the year 2020 for that ATV designated Newport City Streets is presented at Newport City Council on 9/16 with a curfew of 10 p.m. to 8 a.m. For a trial period from May 2020 to October 2020.
The motion is made, deserve a second. Motion made or seconded, now we'll open it up for a discussion. I have a few things to go over before, I have a few things to go over before I open it up for a discussion. First, I'm going to let the council members ask questions, comments, and speak first. Then everyone will be allowed two minutes to speak because of the size of the crowd. If I fail to repeat of what was said before, I will ask the person if they have something new to offer. This is just expedite things. Newport City residents and Newport City business owners will be the first allowed to speak. Then I will open it up to other non-residents to speak. Everyone must step up to this microphone, identify themselves, where they reside or own a business. All questions and comments must be addressed to the City Council, the mayor. And then the City Council, the City Manager, or Police Chief will answer that. We need assistance, representative from the borderline bridge riders will then be asked to answer the question or respond if none of us are able to do that. I want strongly urge everyone to be respectful of each other and adhere to the time limits. I'm not going to tolerate anybody attacking people. I'm not going to tolerate any negativity or anything like that towards one another. We're going to have a respectful discussion tonight. And as you saw, I'm not going to be afraid to ask people to leave. That's one thing I'm not going to be afraid to do. Now, this is the third meeting where discussion of opening up certain streets to ATVs for a one-year trial period is being discussed. At the first meeting, which was on September 16th, I did make it clear that the first meeting was a presentation only. Our second meeting was for questions and answers. And then this third meeting would be more discussion, questions and answers, and a vote. Now we're having a third meeting, and there's some things I would like to address. First, it's been out there that the City Manager, myself, the mayor, and all the department heads met several times with Mr. Janes. That is false. We met once before the presentation to the City Council. So I just want to squash that misinformation that's out there. We did not meet several times. Some people have been questioning my ethics on this whole issue. I find that very disturbing because I have done nothing to violate any law. I have done nothing to violate any state statute. And I have not violated our city charter. So everything is ethical and above board. As mayor, I can meet with people well before a council meeting. And I do that quite often to talk to people before I put them on the agenda. That alleviates some of my concerns about just putting people on the agenda. And it's actually in the City Manager's job description to meet with people and get gathered information before presentations to the City Council. So there is nothing unethical about this whole procedure. And then there's some that are questioning the democratic process. We are a council elected by the voters of the city of Newport. We are elected to represent the citizens of this community. We are responsible for making policy decisions, and that is our job. And so there is no democratic process being circumvented here. And now on to the ATV proposal. I know I'm being long-winded, but I just wanted to say a few things. I support this trial period. One of the main reasons is that a police chief supported it. I firmly believe in his judgment. He is the money charger of the public safety of the city of Newport. And he has no issue with the trial period, and I value his judgment. If the chief had not been prepared for this trial period, I probably would have supported it. You know, because I value his opinion. And that's what we hired him for, to give us advice. I support this proposal since I saw it firsthand in New Hampshire. ATV shared the road, and the sentence was very clear, where it started and stopped. I support this idea, which everyone hopes will increase business at local restaurants, stores, gas stations, and hotels. This 19 is thinking outside the box for ATV's throughout downtown. This fits into our outdoor recreational economy. And it even fits into age range. Because many people range from age 20 probably up to the 70s and 80s. So it fits into those two categories that Newport has. Finally, I've said, why not give it a try? It can help local businesses, and I say that's what we're going in. Too often our local businesses are constantly hit up for donations. Donations so that things can, we can have free events or fundraisers. Well, they need income, so they can donate. And for that, I think we need to support this trial period to see if it is a boost to businesses. I know in the communities I contacted in New Hampshire, we heard both sides of the story. I forwarded those emails to members of the City Council. And it was on one community, it was a mixed bag, but others that are very successful and has helped their businesses. So, bottom line is, I support this, and I support the trial period. With that, I turn it over to council members, if they have comments or questions.
I think from the last few meetings, everybody understood that I was very much for this. And I think I have one question for Janes, is this okay? The final proposal, one of the rumors that went around was that the City Mayor and the City Manager offered to open more streets, like you asked for initially. Was this your initial proposal or nothing?
Mr. Mayor, our original proposal was to actually come down, down West Street, down Third Street, down National Street, across Long Ridge and that side. After brainstorming with the local department heads and the city, we came up with a better idea. Because the reason we wanted to introduce the city is the effect that it will have. Why don't we come in open one side of it and leave these other businesses out? After consulting with these wonderful people, we came up with a better idea. And it would be fair to say Newport City Motel, we didn't include them into this proposal. Could be leaving out a whole group of your businesses. And when our brainstorming had failed, the rest of the businesses. That's why we came up with a proposal to keep these apps. This is being done successfully around now. We are not defending, we are enforcing. We are trying to bring a economic benefit to this city. I do so strongly that this is going to be successful and it's going to be well managed. We want to get a strong, well, we have a lot of large membership that's going to expect what you're going to allow us to do. But also remember, we have four and a half months' season. That's what we're asking for, four and a half months of trial. And another thing is the should all ATV stories, ATV stands for all, or any. They are mainly on that side.
So for me, the council didn't find out until you brought the proposal to the council. The mayor, City Manager, and department heads knew and were working on your proposal before we even found out. So for me, that's a step in the wrong direction, alright? Our charter assigns us council, which is the worst side of it, and the mayor to make decisions for the city. So if this negotiation is going on, we should have known.
Mr. Mayor, you didn't know that at first meeting. Because I did not contribute any attention, forbid my attention to the asshole. That this was a plan that was brought by myself originally. And then we proved it that all businesses could see.
So, we have all presentations before the council or the council, all of them, whether they're ATVs or VAS or any other presentation. It is uncomfortable for people to come before the council and be grilled. So we try to work with them to say, okay, if you would like this presentation, here's what we think, the council is going to ask you questions. That's not done. When the presentation was made by Scott and his maps, he was very conservative. He had actually two proposals, one was to come down, um, uh, Farner's.
City Farm.
City Farm, over to Lakefront, and the other one was, yeah. When we did the 5,000th review of the map, we realized that businesses would be excluded if they were able to just go around the bend on the Veterans Memorial Bridge on the Land Road. We had received information that this east side is interested in taking some of its business. We know that Newport Auto Body on Union Street is very active in maintaining these types of equipment. We know there's a hotel on East Main Street, we know there's a restaurant, we know there's a gas station. So our brainstorming, as you called it, produced a more effective presentation so that more businesses could take advantage of us. It also includes the pickup and to equip. And as we brainstormed that, we thought it would make sense to put what's called a trailhead, if I'm using the correct terminology. So that you can have a trailhead out of the Port's garage, because there's room there on the ends. And that you can have a trailhead out back at the recycling center, because there's room there on the ends. That would be very helpful and allow users a place to park, a place to go, a place to dine, and a place to shop. So that's how we went from just wandering its way around from Main Street and right out of Land Road to take advantage of the businesses that are making the most street. So, looking at this, you know, proposal from the Council and how we look at Newport City, I looked at it, you know, one safety should have some information going around about safety. And it's an interesting statistic, and we haven't heard anything we want usually, but bicycles are on par with ATVs on national studies on accidents and casualties. And we're not promoting bicycles, but that, aside the point. If we look specifically at Newport and ATVs traveling the designated roads, we have something a little bit, I think, obviously, maybe in other communities, is that we have a 25 mile an hour speed limit in the city, except for one section that is 35 that might run into the city. So if all of us, everyone else who's on the boat, is observing the speed limit of 25 miles an hour, which it is, we'd actually all be traveling at the same speed. So we're not doing the issue of a 50 mile an hour speed zone with some ATV type of law at 25 or 30 miles an hour that is, you know, interfering with traffic, people trying to pass, those types of things. So while that of course would not totally negate any safety issue, I think it does fall into the category of significant deduction to the safety issues. So that's kind of where my thought, no, that's not kind, that is where my thought is, safety issue. As for noise, this is a little more difficult for me to kind of sort through. And it's basically because we have no idea what's going to happen. We don't know if we are going to be dealing with, you know, one lone ATV coming through the area of Union. Are we going to be dealing with a few groups of three or four? Or are we going to be dealing with a, you know, state line of 50 coming through town? We have no idea. We have nothing to base the noise impact on our city. And the only way we're going to know that is if we have a trial period to find out exactly what noise issues will pull to the lots. So, and we have, you know, as I mentioned before, we certainly have other vehicles in town, motorcycles and, you know, some trucks and things like that certainly are noisy. So on a business issue, trying, you know, looking at that, picking that up through, again, we don't know the exact impact that will have on businesses. We don't know if the ATVs are going to access the Newport City streets or just going to come from somewhere else. Or will they take advantage of the businesses that are here and be able to, you know, eat and dine and do those types of things? I would, you know, I can make an assumption, and I'm not right, but it's an assumption that people will stop and they will eat at the restaurants in town. That being said, you know, most businesses provide employment in Newport. Most of us know employment is a very serious issue here. We need jobs, we need people to be employed. So by not allowing this potential revenue for the businesses in town would not be a business friendly and would not serve our community well in supporting businesses who in turn, you know, support jobs. So I, I, I'm not in favor of banning that potential opportunity for revenue for businesses. And again, to sort of, you know, pick up on what Paul said, I sort of forgot about the fact that, you know, we have a huge number of very, you know, everybody, we're quiet pauses in town, let's put it that way, who all want to raise and all immediately turn to businesses for support. You pick up any flyer, anything, you know, there's always a list of businesses who will donate. And so I think we sort of owe to the businesses, and they're expected to donate. We should be supportive of their businesses to try to bring in revenue so that they can turn around and donate to a lot of vast causes in town. So, I, my conclusion is, is that, you know, with rare exceptions, very good things in life are black and white. There's always, you know, where one falls on an issue, usually has to look one's perspective on the issue. So for this reason, I believe that allowing a trial period is a responsible and pragmatic approach to this. It'll provide the opportunity to assess the impact of ATVs on Newport. And it will have the opportunity for the ATVs to, you know, that community to show that they're responsible, that they can, you know, obey the rules of the law of the roads, that they can be a contributing member of the community. It provides the opportunity for folks who maybe are opposed to find out and see who their oppositions are around. So, so this is that at this point, I support having trial period for ATVs.
One thing I'd like to address, Mr. Mayor. It's been a lot of talk about all this negotiation and everything else that's been achieved, nobody was advised. I'd just like to point out that the City Manager actually did exactly what the law was supposed to do. One of her duties as the City Manager is to collect information, to lay the conditions based on the city, to analyze, interpret, and summarize if you recommend any action or campaign. That is exactly what she did. We had the presentation on September 16th. We had all the information presented to us so we could make informed decisions. We had a start of the night. Without that, people not, there'd be vague ideas, vague camera programs. So this, over a month ago, gave us time to sit back and ponder. So at a certain point, the initial progress that she did exactly what she was supposed to do.
Okay, and with that, I want to open it up to the floor. I want Newport City residents first, and I want everyone to, I guess, to line up at this microphone who wishes to speak, Newport City residents, business owners first. And then I would go outside of Newport City. And I'm holding time for two minutes when we get by illustrious Hyde Park Theater. Okay. State meeting and residents.
My name is Lori Britt, I have a Brian Hutter on Avenue Drive. And I do have a concern because in all actuality, from Lane Road to the top of Avenue is considered a state highway. The speed limit is 50 miles an hour. I turn off of Avenue on Route 1 and 5 almost on a daily basis. It is difficult there because of, you know, weekends, because traffic, line of sight issues from that roof. Looking west, there's a hill there. I did talk to AOP today, and I want to make sure that this happens, that the club does seek permission, they have enough permission to travel on a state highway. And that is really my only concern at this point. I have very good friends right here in Fargo who are ATV riders. I want to support them, I want to support the businesses in Newport. Those are my concerns, is the speed limit there, the traveling on Route 1 and 5 down to all the road can be dangerous. People do not go 35 miles an hour on that road. And I'm here to tell you that. My son almost got hit by a fire one morning in Central Michigan trying to go on a school bus because of the sun coming from the east. It is the same difficulty going west in the evening. Sometimes the sun is bad going up that way. And I just hope that the club and the city will look at that because there's more than just city roads involved that comes Newport town and Lane Road is in Newport town and township. Thank you. There's also a liability issue with insurance. And I really like to know because not all ATVs are required to have insurance, depending on how they're financed. And many ATV companies have say in their materials that they don't recommend driving on the pass.
Good evening, Lord Roger Brady, I'm in 24th Avenue, City of New York. I just want to say that I welcome this fireman, outdoor recreation, tourist, and asset city. I believe the city would be pleasantly surprised to be able to handle this all at once. I welcome it, thank you.
Hi there, I'm Jenny Mott, I'm in the 32 Green Place, apartment 3.
Can you speak to the mic?
I pay $675 a month from the zip code of Valley. And I paint for Newport on Pleasant Street, on Third Street. It was my school, I remember, I remember, my grandchild.
And here it is.
My grandchild catches the bus on Third Street. And we live in that neighborhood, we're parents of school, we walk those streets, we use those sidewalks. How any person's smaller in this city. I think so, that's a great idea, it's a monkey, it would be easily, take a right on the Pleasant Street extension, catch a car. It's a monkey, and we could easily take a right on Pleasant Street Extension, catch Coventry Street. Once she get that up to the light, a left on Main Street, it's Maple Fields. Restaurant owners might like that, they'll see you before they get to Maple Fields. That might be helpful. And my only other comment is to clarify something that last week she, the sample said about noise ordinance. There's some Newport City residents in Fisher Corp. who used this week for violation of city's noise ordinance. So clearly, he was arrested by the city police for violation of Newport's ordinance. So the only good thing for us to do here, you know, is like lines out, like it's all the ordinance to me. But if you're arrested and you're not allowed to come out of the property, that'd sound very weird.
Hi, I'm Carrie Ross. I'm in Newport, Rhode Island. Yes, my name is Carrie Ross. I'm Newport, Rhode Island, on Sixth Street. And the noise, I'm a big concern that they would go through quite a lot. You know, for further to the noise and the fight for the food, you know, the violence and the council. And I do feel that, you know, it's a lot of these, a lot of these things. All of my side. And you might want to use the order. No, I don't, you know, but I feel like, I don't think it's a good idea.
Well, dear Chair, it's me. I'm in favor of this trial period if you want to be bored. I think that I've traveled a lot of miles with it. We go down to the Shawmatt Restaurant in Marcell from Irisburg and travel around, basically, the northern half of the state. And all of the ATV people that I've met have been like campers that are working on the beach. They're all friendly. They all travel by by their laws, and they try to keep everything under control. I think one of the issues that you're going to find when people get upset with ATV's is they probably will get right on the speed limit. And muscle people on high level and whatever. So I'm in favor of this. I hope that the council sees fit for this trial. I think we really need to do this. The city is a little bit stagnant, and we need to be proactive on anything. And we're not going to be proactive on, or we're not going to have industry or whatever in the city. So we need to work on recreation in real big time. And I'm hoping that you all consider that as a positive city. And invite them in. You'll be surprised that they're people. Thank you.
I think anybody on this panel questions for us, and I'm just speaking on anything. And I think everybody's pretty happy about this, which I'm definitely for it. My nine-year-old daughter really, really, really wanted to come, but we wouldn't let her, if she wanted to. She have a leg, but she have hands on her face. But she wanted you guys to know she really wants to drive to school and outside by side. Obviously, I think I should drive off at the school, but I think she'd stop. Perfect for my parents, and walk the rest of the way to school. She'll be way cooler than my friend, but it was kind of hard for us. And much of there are children who, you know, will get lost stops in the city, they had dead lost stops because there will potentially be more traffic going through. Although I don't know whether that would be a huge issue. But there's, we're really looking forward to this too.
Other folks from Newport, Newport businesses, owners, let me before I open up to everybody else.
Hey, this is Eric Graham. I actually own and operate for the university and speaks here. And they have to see who guys are trying to do stuff with.
Can you raise your microphone? Because we can't hear you.
Sorry. I think that it's definitely a responsibility to go to the trial period. But also it's something that shouldn't have done a while ago. I feel like we are a recreational community. That's what pushing board in this area, which appears to have seen become stagnant. Still dealing with age a lot, and the law that the city take there. But what we need to do is hand in, is send other ideas. I think this is just one piece of a puzzle. So I really hope that all of you see that this is a business that is a positive thing. So I hope that all of you guys will favor this.
Okay.
My name's Sarah Charney. I do a lot of track area. Also, warehouse specialist, I can insure beside the tasting center. I just want to say one thing, I feel I have a responsibility to keep this moving in Newport. I don't say stagnant, stagnant is a good thing. We need all the small businesses here. I have three businesses out of ten on the pop businesses on Main Street. I think it would be nice to get other businesses. People talk about locking down Main Street, no shopping businesses. I know I'm willing to come here if we find aggression. Everybody needs to step back a little bit. Everybody's got slightly ambiguous about the ATVs or anything else that comes into the community. But if you want to build a big and wide process, you're not willing to track somebody with that kind of money to come in and invest in our community. If we are not willing to open up to other ideas in other businesses. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Tom Evans, Newport County Attorney. I was closer on George Quine husband, also a young writer in the D V. I have two concerns, why, I have two, two concerns. First, in reading the document, I saw the definition of ATV. And I'm not sure, I think a lot of people that I know are talking about four-wheelers. And that's what I thought at first, we talked about four-wheelers. But I read that at the initial talk, four-wheelers, three-wheelers, possibly dirt bikes. Now, now I remember that question, no dirt bikes. Okay, you're four-wheelers, three-wheeler, three-wheelers, no three-wheelers? So what, so now we're talking, four-wheelers?
Four-wheelers.
For that, that is somewhat of a concern there as far as safety issues. The second thing that's a little upsetting to me is when I heard once and I cried in my own day-to-day existence, a fellow argument from that Third Street community objected to coming to their community for a radical reason. The suggestion made earlier, I feel, makes so much more sense to alleviate their concerns. Go down towards the country street and take the truck route in. I don't think that's going to affect any businesses, et cetera. And I think would alleviate and empower some people that have some issues.
Diane Field, Newport, Newport. I want to start with the topic idea. Think of that earlier, that we do anticipate drug rules for reason because drugs are large and noisy. And so we recognize that they may be destructive residential areas. So I think there's a way to use as many drug rules as possible that would be perfect because it would minimize the impact on residents. There are people who speak for any day, I used to work in that shit. And there are many people who are, I definitely am not making that a rule into the streets. I was trying to get somewhere else before I went to court. But I'm nervous that I think the trial period is probably okay. But I'm concerned about what happens after the trial period, that there's a way to, you know, specify in the, whatever the past, that there's a particular public comment that's set up at any time so that we can make sure that people who might have had this be disrupted or other related impacts from the noise or whatever would have a chance to register those comments before a final decision is made. That's really important because the trial period is just that, an experiment. And if you got, yeah, there's also an experiment, there's no public doing it. So is there some way to put that down and write in that there will be public comment periods that folks who are concerned can come forward on the matter? And let's see their concerns and their proposals.
Others?
Hi, I'm Phil. I've lived in Newport for all four years of my life. My own apps and business, my business will see money pending for ATVs coming in. They all, who's one penny, they all commit, they do. So my family's been here for generations. Newport's filled up with apps that I don't know, but just some of them they don't know. I have only, I do support the organization. I voted Phil Anderson representatives, don't mind my views and have said issue to him. I know I have to warn, I remind the official as well in front of my elected officials. I don't have mine for that. That's why you're in most positions. If my elected officials don't vote the way I have to reflect my views, I will vote against them in the next election. If as elected official, you don't feel record enough of your constituents, of your constituents, you should be actively seeking the vote. Republiq meaning should be enough to lose the policy to the community. Don't blame the process. What I've seen is proposals been locked in the proper chairman. If I decide I want to hold a celebrity boxing match on Versus Burn at Air Park, I'm not going to come to the council first. I'm going to have to directly, and I'm going to have to go through the redlining process. This seems similar. Seems like it was a very process-oriented deal. I have very well concerned about traffic anyways. I was part of a group of people from my neighborhood concerned about traffic anyways. And then fifteen years ago, when they decided to stop this testing at the home, and they, I think they could be doing this. Our concerns were, and it's apparent that it was in the public sector to allow that service to happen. So then I have several hundred vehicles moving from neighborhood. I don't see any difference between that, because vehicles in my neighborhood are having that, oh, we can do something.
Can I ask Phil a question, please? Do you have a business relationship with the city, specifically the wastewater treatment plant? I would appreciate if you would disclose that you are a consultant who is being paid by the city.
Sure, I don't see what that has to do with it, but that should.
Sorry, I'm going to short everybody's experience. Um, we're in a little third street. I've probably hasn't been, um, you know, pouring money into the area. But my concern with safety is that we are talking about this experiment, as it's been said, because it's humanized. So I would be more comfortable by seeing more data, um, a safety plan, more of how we're going to hold ATV drivers accountable on the streets. We should make drives safely. Main Street is a high pedestrian area. And first, you cross the street at crosshops on a good day. So, I mean, there's child care for our children. So I'm not very opposed to ATV being on the streets, but I should have felt more comfortable rather than a plan for all of the scene to show that all of the safety concerns have been addressed before then, the trial period. Those are just my thoughts.
I have to go back to one of those first. I have a sick mind, I will. Anyone else from Newport City, business owner, resident, before I open it up to the general?
I have a few short questions. Number one, who wrote the ordinance? Yeah, so I'm curious to see who wrote the ordinance, as there is a reference in the ordinance to the All Turan Vehicle Association, and it would appear that they are major contributor to this ordinance, unless concerning. To go back to the question that Tom Evans posed, in the draft ordinance, under section 3A, it does say that all touring vehicle or ATV means any non-highway recreational vehicle. And so some of them have no less than two low-pressure tires, not wider than 60 inches, with two-wheel ATVs having permanent full-time power to both wheels. So already we're having some disagreements about the definition. And that is one reason why I believe in civil discourse and being able to hash out questions like these before something is jammed through. Another main question I have is the section of Route 105 that Lori Bryn referred to that is indeed 50 miles an hour and a state highway. Has somebody stopped permission from the state to use 105? And then the fact that all the manufacturers of these ATVs warn that they should not be operated on paved roads, and we're just going to discard that and listen to an association that wants to have access to the roads? I mean, I certainly don't blame you for wanting access, that's fine and dandy. But what's their liability as a city if we ignore those warnings from every trade association and manufacturer? One of the chronic problems in the council room, in my seven half years on the council, has been that we come to a council meeting and we're presented with a dark deal, something that's already been assembled, and there's really no room for negotiation. The same is true for this ordinance, we were presented on September 16th with a draft ordinance, and there have been no efforts that I've seen to make any adjustments to this ordinance, despite all the public comment that's been sent by email, all the things on social media. People have been asking, why can't we use the truck route? Why is Third Street so important? And I haven't seen one answer from anybody at this table of why that needs to be kept. Why not use the truck route? As I was saying eloquently this week earlier, people can come on Pleasant Street Extension down Coventry Street. When you get to the intersection at Lago, easily take a left if Main Street is a bit concerned and stay out of Third Street, where I have unequivocally heard nothing but please don't let ATVs down Third Street. And I think my final point is that, as Diane Field said, there's no measures in this ordinance to figure out if it's working or it's not, whether it's a public comment period or some minor measure such as keeping track of how many complaints, how many citations are issued, what defines success or failure. Without information like that, how are we to judge? So I strongly believe that this is an issue that the people need to weigh in on. And I'm very disappointed. And I'm very disappointed that folks at this council table are defending the way that this was presented to us and the citizens, to have us know nothing about this until the done deal draft ordinance was placed in front of us on September sixteen, this not democratic. Thank you.
Close your applause please. Would you like to leave too?
The first question, who wrote the ordinance? The ordinance was presented to us as a template and it's always good to have a template. We then forwarded it onto the city attorney to make adjustments that you see. You'll know that the highways are open for determination as are the curfew. I think the motion included the curfew organization. So that's a starting point. We have to start somewhere. I'll let the council members address general stroke, that's not up to me. There's my other thing, can't define anything like a trial pressure stop, that's going to have to be you. Chronic problems, present as a done deal? No, it's not presented as a done deal. We had three meetings, which had no secrets, as you may have have a little bit, that I've somehow negotiated something without my job. No, that's not my job. My job is to present the information that we decide. This is a decision for the council. So we've given you the information and the rest is up to you. And that's your job. Measures of the ordinance? I assume that we would use the same metrics we'd use for the VAS proposal, which has been successful. I think we're going on our third year, maybe our fourth. Minimal amount of complaints affected over the pandemic, chief of Santa, no complaints. We work well with the organizations. With VAS, using us as an example, if you have any questions, you can use them and they respond right back and we feel like... So the questions are answered. I assume that you have a same positive relationship with the ATV. Let's see, the last one, people need to lay in on this process. It's not democratic, I'll let the council members address that.
Well, the first thing I'd like to address is the noise problem. Anybody that's my age and has lived on the Land Road, your own Prospect Street, can remember the fifties and sixties when the railroad hanged all night long. There was a tremendous amount of noise throughout the city. As far as Union Street, we've always had the mill over there running free shares at the last drive. In fact, Union Street's probably one of the busiest streets in the city. So for that street, I do see an issue. The issue to think about tonight though, about going down Pleasant Street extension down to the truck route, makes sense to me. And I think that's the first time that's come up. And I would think that would be a small thing to do, mileage wise and public wise. Now, as far as the process itself, I personally feel that fast track. We don't need the ordinance away. I think they could make an adjustment to the route for that point here. I think they could. For me, I've talked to most of my neighbors on the Land Road. Just got a couple of them on the Land Road. We have a lot of elderly people on the Land Road. Most of them don't notice it like yet. If I took a vote on the Land Road, if I took a vote on the Land Road, the answer to the ordinance would probably be no. So when I look at the public process, there's two options. You know, we can pass this ordinance in the public, we can back and request a vote. Or we could set a vote in town meeting, which is in March, and still plenty of time for the ordinance to pass. I'd really like to see a table and the route changed to the Third Street route. But at this point, and I think everyone I've heard can say, I know a couple of business owners down there, they need this business. It's not just about new business, it's about losing business. So there are a lot of things at the table that you've got to understand and learn. What we do, how it impacts the community. Thank you.
So I just guess we just address the accusation that this was a secret, that the city manager and mayor acted in a way that looks not appropriate. I can only go back to my experiences in what the city chartered and the responsibilities of the city manager needs to, you know, manage daily operations of the city. There is no such thing as a done deal in this type of thing because the city manager then brings things to the council, but the council should consider. So it's not, it's not a situation where the city manager or the mayor can sign on on things and just have it done without coming to the council. Their job is to present information, present proposals, things that come to the council. Personally, I appreciate that when folks are going to be doing presentations and types of things, that they do look through the city manager or the mayor first, that there's some idea of what's being presented. So we know, so that hey, whoever's presenting knows, you know, what obstacles or things that might want to be in the way. Or I just think it's a process that helps people bring a good presentation to the council. That's certainly an opinion of mine. And I believe that it's a process that works. We have had, you know, this is the third meeting, we had questions and answers. I was not at the last city council meeting, I was out of the country. But in other conversations that I've heard and things, I haven't heard anyone presented an alternate route. I've heard a lot of complaints about it, but I haven't heard a single alternate route presented. Maybe I missed it because again, I was out of the country for a little while, until tonight. So it would have been, at the time of public comment at the last meeting, when it was time to present those alternate routes, I think it would have picked up with the apples there.
As far as the state highway 105, I know I spoke with a representative of BTRs who supports what we're trying to do. So the state is, my indication from this one representative, they're open, they like the idea that they want to open the streets to ATVs. As far as permits, that's up to their organization to get all the proper permits for state highways because they had to do that in Lowell and Route 100. I know they had to do it there, they had to do it in Troy. They've actually had to depart 105 because there's many ATVs that lanes rush to run. I believe they go a part of that way there. And so that's just going to be part of their process is to get the permit from the state to go on that stretch of highway that since it's outside the city. Anything impeded the city, that's what this is covering. And so the BTRN chart that I spoke with said they fully support what we're trying to do here in Newport.
Don't forget that it's also Newport town.
Well, I was just saying, I know, I know, I'm just saying that it's up to them to get the proper permits on the state highways outside of Newport City proper. And then as far as the public safety, I'm going to indulge upon the chief, it'd be just fine, to express, you know, what you, how you evaluated the public safety aspect of, you know, having this trial period. And I know you will track complaints since you've been before, you go for any type of, any type of violation or issue.
Right, we have waited in our produce and we tracked segments.
Just can you move the mic up to your taller?
Is that it? No? No, it wasn't. So that's what I have to compare to. In terms of tracking incidents, we do the same thing with snowmobiles, so we can make separate people for meeting complaints and tracking that way. And I think that would be a good, as Field said, a good way to go that way. Public comment time, you're fifty years or so. In terms of the other safety concerns, liability on the city, just overall, I'm not necessarily sure that there would be liability on the city per se, for my personal. I don't see that there would be anyone else bothering an old vehicle, a speeding vehicle, as in how this type of vehicle or was using the vehicle that they own as the type of equipment, as the operator of the vehicle. So I don't foresee any liability on the city per se for that. And then in terms of, has this worked about the area's speed without our chief chief of New Hampshire? And Norman Hampshire about the successes of the vehicles, maybe add lessons learned. It seems to me that the speeding doesn't seem to be as much of an issue in these two conversations that I've had with ATV traffic. If anything, it tends to slow traffic down in Charlotte. So we've been seeing potential to see a positive impact from that as far as speed levels are concerned. But again, without trial period, it's really tough to say. Do you have any other to address at all?
Thank you. Anything else? No, there's Lady in the back, you spoke already, right?
Yes.
Yes, and I want to go to anyone who has not spoken yet, just this gentleman and then a gentleman back there.
I'm also getting on Hurricer Hill Street in Newport City. My son got me introduced into four-wheeling about five years ago. And it's been one of the best things that's happened in my family. So it's given us opportunity to respect that. A lot of times we have to travel all the way to New Hampshire to go riding, to have any type of trail activity whatsoever, because our trails, we've got twenty-five miles here, twenty miles there, and we've got a trail, you retire an ATV from one trail to the other trail. So I thought this was a really good idea to go open up the city to allow us to run the route and go out for a ride and go to Lowell, go wherever you want to go with the trail. It's a great opportunity. And I did a phone call today with members of the community concerned about getting out on a highway doing fifty miles an hour. Will we do that in a couple of places already anyhow, like what you mentioned? Lowell, Liversburg, there's two access points that I don't know about that thing. If anybody had any concerns about the impact of the city, maybe somebody could call Berlin, New Hampshire. That whole city would be impacted. That Florida would be the first time I'm over there. We're riding around the whole city, of course, everybody needs the hand signals, everybody's following the speed limit. And there's a lot of ATVs on the trails, on the city roads, going to Walmart, going to gas stations, going to wherever they're coming in off the trails and they go back out on the trails. So I find it to be a very, a very, a great opportunity for the city to be able to start getting some revenue in here, but there's a real weakness in, you know, that's my opinion. I don't think there's a lot in the state. With every organization, there are young kids that abuse the law. We're dealing with that, we're finally doing that every year, we're almost working with that, so.
One thing I just want to stress too, Berlin, New Hampshire has a population of ten thousand people. Just disappointed that Clark will let people know that statistic that Guam is around, I think, thirty-six hundred, thirty, I think thirty-six hundred people. And so it's quite a range of populations. I was pleasantly surprised when I found out that Berlin had opened up their streets and there was a city of ten thousand, that surprised me. But it seems to be working there. This gentleman, do you have something?
This is Mayor, Councilman, my name's Jerry Richard. I'm a member of Foreline Drive Rovers. I'm also a MOPAC certified, which is a national highway vehicle conservation council. I was involved in opening Foreline Scott, another man was Foreline, let him know the trail. We're west of Detroit here. Very successful. Westwood store, so it was only there, she didn't have numbers, as far as percentage of her business, but she did say that next year she's going to have to have our help take on the engine business. She reached out to Jane Paris, the owner of the Detroit, he sent me an email today. Very successful, she, we opened up a jail system around the middle of July, I believe it was, this summer. Immediately saw a growth in business. By the end of the riding season, we had a thirty-five percent increase in sales on Saturday and a twenty percent increase on sales on Sunday. And there's no business in Newport that cannot afford an increase in sales. I mean, I can't speak for safety issues other than we had no wrong, but the Friday through 100, the gentleman was feeling. They drive by respectful automobiles, the ones that we support, the four-wheelers are awesome. No, it's a win-win for everybody. If you don't like it, you don't have to do it again. If it works great, everybody makes money, everybody has it all. You know, they talk about safety, it's not like we can just park ourselves, we get in our quarters, our side by sides, and turn each other person. We're the exact same people driving our cars and trucks and motorcycles up and down the streets every day. It's not like we turn into some little gremlin to decide to go to a cattle fair. So we're responsible, respectful, we spend lots and lots of money on our equipment and side by side. And people come from everywhere to enjoy it, we can win, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hello, I'm Jason Boobin, I have Cajun snack bar in Lowell. And I'm just here to attest that everything that the club has presented is true. I have seen a twenty percent growth since, maybe the last four or five years. And that's possible. My sales are twenty percent and I can only attest that that's possible. What I'd like to just have, I'm from the town, I can't really attest to a lot of the concerns that would be brought forth. But I went to North Venture, I know Newport pretty well. I've kind of watched the town go through their renaissance. And I've heard the word stagnant being used in it. What I feel maybe through this renaissance was the town was trying to create demographic that didn't exist. What does exist right now is a demographic that's not compatible. They're waiting to come in, they have plenty of money seemingly spent. I'm always blown away by spending habits. I have an gas station in North York, I would love to have those opened up on state highways if not there yet. But I would love to see them open my businesses. I really think that you should keep them open right now and pay attention because another economic opportunity probably won't come around like this. We've watched VAS, the Snowmobile Association, grow through the eighties and nineties and then unfortunately I think it's declined and pretty much diminished. This is the growth. These machines are not going anywhere, you may as well eat your share of it.
One very last please. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet before? And I'll briefly let the two who spoke before very briefly, this gentleman and then...
My name is Chris Carter. And he's had to stick up a lane above it, allows ATVs. It's a very responsible organization. I just moved here this year, I own the...
The other thing I'd want to say that I'm fine with, you do this in mind, is as I said, this group seems to be very well ordered. And good people, law enforcement, et cetera. But when we pass this, anybody with an ATV in the city of Newport can now ride around, correct?
No.
No.
Why not?
Because where the streets have defined in the
No, 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 I understand, I understand. They get off those streets, they can
Remember, it's a state of mind, you have classes, that's a sticker, but it's a state of the nation.
It's just like, it's like snow machines. In order to go on the snow trail, you have to have a pass sticker for the snow machines. This is the same thing. If, in order for them to ride these trails, they have to hear a pass, what do you call it? Pass, pass, yeah, yeah, yeah. After this new stuff, they have to have a sticker, like a registration.
You pay for it.
Pay for it.
So.
Also, so gathering that most residents of Newport who have free wheelers probably don't have that. You may do this all the time, or help me build.
Okay, let's see. Okay, there's a lady here who's a patient who way in.
I'm Christine Mosley, I live in Jersey. I'm here because I'm sure she can be right, so I spend a lot of time in her cheese. My questions are really about, um, five early. How much insurance can we look at ATVs intersecting with other ATVs that strikes me as one of them? I have a little idea that ATVs can be checking vehicles, where people set them up. So I'm concerned about the insurance for people here. Um, I also, because they don't have license plates on them, if you guys How, I'm, I'm concerned about being able to see, um, if I have to complain about something, I don't want to charge the entire group of people with the same rush. I want to be able to complain about a specific, it would be more specific behavior. Um, when I had passed on the wrong side of the road in Arlington, um, by the one ATV, I had not seen my license plate. Right, but if we pass a disorder, it's still riding to people being able to ride. They're not going to be so stupid. So, okay, if you're hoping you can, of course, to say, I, in my order, do we have manpower to be able to check each ATV that comes into a port to see if they are a pass? That's how I think. That's what I said, sir. So people coming through New Hampshire to ride, keep reminding to get a pass of some registration. So the people who are doing the long days are all looking for you now. Register with a pass.
Pretend, pretend, you know.
It feels like there are a lot of questions about enforcement, and, you know.
The thing, well, well, I actually, I'm going to answer that myself. I have, I have a lady who based upon Chief Police, who we rely on. Um, we rely on, as I said, I rely on his judgment for our community.
And he was supporting the manpower that he needs.
He says he has enough manpower now, and the, Mrs. Janes, they actually work with the Sheriff's Department, who has two, one patrol ATV. Um, actually, some of the questions that were raised, maybe you could re-answer some of them. I'll have Mrs. Janes.
Uh, importantly, they operate with many, uh, number one. Number one, they must be registered with state law through yearly registration, similar to the snow trail. Uh, all operators also must join, uh, assets by the enforcement association. Uh, that is the role of our, 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 where they do that charge, they will be able to operate under this. Uh, within the ordinance, there is already, uh, minimal liability insurance required that is in the ordinance. And also, if this doesn't pass, uh, for the subject, while we advance this issue, we will come to the council to the big permission call to officially sign it at the council, which comes to the city with a million dollar insurance policy. Our trails are covered with a million dollar insurance policy, not for the handlers. This council is able to handle this. We're asking you to use your signature for the handler, just like the gentleman in the local force over at State Road, and how well we manage it properly. Thank you.
Now, I just have one question.
Yes.
You will be putting up signage?
Yes, we will be putting up signage. At the first meeting of the proposal, I showed the signage that we're going to use. We're going to sign it, we're going to sign it, and then we'll be using beyond this, uh, signs. Uh, and mentioning paper change. Uh, the reason why I originally, number one, originally most certainly, is because we do not feel that we belong on a track route. And if we go off as a street extension, are we going to bring someone else's back there? Is this a, am I back there, did you hear that? It's, it's a trial. Like I mentioned previously, our season is four and a half months. We are not easy without that. Let's give it a try, let's see how it works.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, just wanted to ask you to give the favor of the justice of Janes to answer the question. If he is a person from Port town, uh, and the city, uh, using that person for one, either as a cost.
Newport's apples are already open. And, uh, once again, if this doesn't pass, we're going to process a permanent application for the state highway. It's already drawn out to include the railroad to City Farm. This is all the proposing. The City Farm is already open, fully to ATV use. We choose currently use nine different locations on state highways. And in three of those instances, it's a good amount of results. So we're proceeding down the city. Obviously, where we pop the land road, it is good before, uh, the length of this road. We, we all, we have looked at, we have looked at, we have the pass up, the members of our club know that it's reasonable. And all requests of county, the state of Vermont, and District County in this area is all pass. The state is working very strongly in the office, but this interconnected process is in place. I also want to remind everybody here too, that the city is actually sitting on a water picking out system that's directly related to whatever every address. We also connect now with three other clubs in the state of Vermont, who has opened up an eight hundred mile payment system. This isn't anything new, this is just spread. This is going to be huge. And the leaves of snowmobiling, snowmobiling started, I will go on the way. Our partners in snowmobiling, certain things like this, we need discussions. But where the snowmobiling is involved, it is operating on. It's definitely not dying, um, well, that will change. It's not dying, it's still waiting. If it's snowmobiling, whether or not, some years it can be awesome, but some, for years going at zero. That weather, there is many, many, many charter buses. But it's not. What we're trying to do is get, get rid of preparation, overall preparation for different seasons. I feel that this would be a lot stronger, because for one day, it's summer, and that gets actually more enjoyable. Like, I'm surprised in the rain, or maybe. So, but like I mentioned, when I first stood up there, it's really the beginning of the phase, and then we're also with the city. And there were, yeah, four and a half month, five years. It's not even, we're not already aware, we're not busy on winter roads, we're not going to put ourselves out on city five roads. I don't think we do, like, if someone else, you know. So it's one and a half months, Brian. And I've asked, how are we going to know if this works? We definitely know that in the same council, the big permission call. And we are more than happy to have another generally, since you can, that's information change, yes? Perfect. We're coming here, everybody's up to board, and it's just a top order here. Plus, the accident, your fire department's washing the blood off, made sure you're like, I've been told before, I'm just like, well, shit. Honest. But I don't, I do not believe that's any of the case. Mr. Ryan, I do not believe that's any of the case. Thank you.
Uh, I just heard you say that you don't feel it's appropriate for ATVs to be on the truck route, yet Cottontown Street is the truck route. So the proposal to have, share that access at the recycling center headed toward Main Street, that is the charter.
I, I understand, I understand, so you're right. Well, I feel it's dangerous, where we come off as a street extension, and then it's torn onto Cottontown Street. That's what people thought we were doing. We have a problem with it yet, uh, but it has a purpose. Uh, as far as concern, I feel it's a safe route, I mean, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you for that explanation. And, um, Pleasant Street extension is not nearly as populated as Third Street. It's, it's a, there's a few houses, but certainly not like Third Street.
Um, so I, I don't think anyways, like, completely against ATVs, because more like, more time for their concerns to be more addressed. Like, I think people are just happy ATV drivers driving crazy. That's not, aren't something concerning, because concern is that, it, the numbers of people driving on a road is significantly, potentially to increase. And I'm not really sure whether our high and populated areas, um, and our streets are really prepared for that. Like, it's working in New Hampshire, with their population of ten thousand, whether they should make streets? Um, do they have more, like, lights versus stop signs? Like, there's like, I just, same, well, I apologize. But I feel like there's one question that I'll answer, and maybe people would be more comfortable if there was more time to have these discussions before we go ahead and do this. If you do have this huge amount of time between now and when it will begin in May. Um.
All right, I just want to go back to Chief of Police and his judgment regarding the streets. Um, and so that's what I, I know as far as safety. I have to guide the Chief of Police as far as his judgment on that aspect. Mr. Ryan.
I, I think we look at this as, uh, heavy traffic. In general, our traffic pattern in Newport always, the high school gets out, the hospital gets out, the mill gets out. And what I've seen, the majority of these people are riding weekends. It would be nice to see traffic on Main Street on weekends. So, you know, sometimes you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. But there's always an opportunity, if we pass this ordinance, to go through the voters. Like, you always apply a petition. You need a couple hundred signatures, which is about the amount of fees to vote in our city every year. So. Tonight's only a competition for me, I've always supported it. But, uh, we'll see where it goes.
Okay, we have one lady right here, state name, where you live.
I'm in Newport Center, New Orleans. And I found a lot about safety. A lot of people from out of town, they hurt lanes, have to cross a little resort, correct? They have to cross a little resort, and they might wake up, and if they get in the lanes, they have to drive along the side of highway. I don't think I have ever heard of one accident in all the years that, I mean, in a great people place, and a ton of me, you know, I, I don't want anybody that has a gas station to sleep today. But I know I others, people like their hand on, and they're winding up. So they take gas there, or they come here. I had groups from out of town, they come late, they eat, they leave their trailers there. Uh, they ride hour. I mean, these people spend a lot of money. And they're very popular. I had one group, and my whole table of buds gave it, they were all mine. Well, four of them sold it to my, you may offer my oils to sweep my floor, to clean up their mess, you know? They're, they're not stalks. And they be brave, brave business, you know, I have a brave feet, that would be perfect for both businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, it's Stacy Darren, it's Newport. I have zero scan this game, I don't own ATV. And, uh, I just wanted to be open and not just in the story, because we have kind of a license that comes through our streets and here. To me, they feel a little more than a TV. Um, and I'm waiting to see how they're right, like, something. Yes, I was a little scared, and I think that I've had a nice little spot in Newport. And so I just wanted, wanted to be open and ask them about these.
All right, with that, we don't have a motion on the floor. And so, at this time, we're going to take the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Not the ayes. But easy, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We have three in favor of the motion. All those opposed, raise your hand. Three in favor, one opposed, the motion carries. We're going to have a five-month trial, um, of ATVs beginning in May 2020 to October 2021. All right, with that, we need to move on to our next, and next agenda item. From, we're, we're going to find an address.
Oh, no, Don's sitting across the way.
Okay, we're going to continue with that, right, we're reading. The next item is unassigned restricted permitted by the pass. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. So, everybody in the pack, you know. So, if this is, there's an app, there's a modulated item on here, we get app approved, just approve, before we can find lightly items. That's basically what we're doing here tonight. Uh, the ones that are not highlighted are ones, nine percent of ones that they hold on for years. You just add ones, and you're, uh, rear round. Ones that highlight that are moved, we're going to add these funds, uh, to level available for one of the projects tomorrow. So if there are any questions on the ATVs, and they want to be fine items, I'll try to answer them. So, the first one, the, uh, tax offset deduction, two hundred dollars was set aside the year before last, or we use in future. We use future tax rates, and last year, you, uh, this year, for this year, you had one seventy-five thousand more. So we, we deducted from the budget needed for this year, with three hundred seventy-five thousand to use the tax. That's why it's going to be greater than the recent initial rate. Uh, if we go down to the economy, street singing, final, it's basically the same. Street resurfacing, you had two hundred dollars, ten hundred and nineteen, so you've got thirty-two thousand left in there, street resurfacing. The next two, street maintenance, street banner new. Uh, the city like that, twenty-eight thousand of street maintenance. We added twenty, so we spent three thousand, we got twenty-five thousand left, we'd like to add two thousand to the banner, street banner. Uh, public works, we had eighteen thousand at the end of last year, we get, added a hundred and ten thousand to fifty-seven. And we spent eighty-six thousand, eighty-four thousand, so we got forty-five thousand left in there for, for the field. Uh, bridge cover repair, it should be by a hundred dollars in there last year, no funds were added. We spent a hundred and forty-two dollars on, on, on the box. There you go, sixty-two hundred dollars, sixty-two hundred dollars left for bridge cover and twenty-one dollars here. Street restructure, we had just fifty-one hundred dollars at the end of last year. Last year, we added thirty-eight dollars. We spent twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, so we've got thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars in there for street, uh, restructure. We reaccredited the fund, fifty-seven dollars at the end of last year, none of them added. We used that money, we have the final payment over here. Uh, money comes in every year from the state, from the, that fund. Uh, tennis court, one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight in the last year. Added twenty-four dollars, that's some of the interest, twenty-four. Uh, it's so much debt, and putting, we have a total of that at the end of this fiscal year. But that is arguing them, and I'm going to have a way to check the tennis court on back of the city. Great for tennis court. Well, that twenty-three thousand, that's six. Uh, gateway maintenance, we had fifteen thousand, so we, nothing was added, they spent it all, you know, nothing left of that. And now we're getting down to current needs improvement, just being pulled off from a camera, I'm not that bad. Uh, we want to add forty-seven thousand, two hundred, and added that best book all there, and it comes with thirty-four dollars. Eight ninety-four left for current needs improvement. That is, we put in one hour, basically, basically, for sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars back. And not in movements, we added thirty thousand dollars, we spent twelve. So seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in there for the office this year. Uh, fire station, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in last year. We added twenty-five thousand, we're there, we used fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I'm just going to, to, to rule that, and, uh, uh, fire department communications, it's twenty-five hundred dollars in there last year. We added one hundred, we used twenty-five hundred. Uh, I think, but you do that for radio, radio, that, that, um. The fire fighter grant cash act, we've been funding fifty thousand, went on for two, three years now, fire fighter grant, we did approve. It's not been approved yet, so we would like to put that, submit that fifty thousand for a grant. Uh, check the GIV for eighty, eight thousand, that's what it says, six thirty eighty, add eight thousand more. You use sixteen thousand in GIV for, if you're sitting on, and then, uh, then this check equivalent, there's nothing yet. You added thirty-three thousand, a hundred, nothing for that spend, and that's for U O D A grant, and great. Uh, this fact, there was, uh, thirty-two thousand, fifty-five, we add fifteen thousand, two thirty-nine. So there's currently forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars left, and they have to do this. So if you go along, you can see the balances, restricted limited assignment, unassigned total balance at the bottom. So what was left, six thirty, this year, six hundred and one hundred, they have a GIV for. But you already assigned one hundred and forty thousand dollars of that, within the R C grant. That would leave a, unassigned balance of three hundred seventy-one thousand, fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. But I think what we're asking is, uh, what if you're planning to add these mind-lay items? We have, uh, the bridge part.
The, the police tech money, that is something that we talked about during the budgeting process for that grant, correct? Because this is that magic grant that you receive.
Well, I don't know what we have, Eddie's mind compare, and then we, whether you are.
Well, I think the motion would be accept, the recommendation of, um, this document, if the council chooses.
Oh, you're, yeah.
Sorry. I see the three thousand dollars for Main Street banners as a new addition, and I would like to strike that and ask the downtown development organization to make those, because they do not have a staff person. They've been allowing them money year after year, and they have not followed through their promises. So they could certainly strike three thousand dollars for banners.
It's not their mission, it's not their budget, this is our responsibility.
Can, can you speak up? I didn't hear, I think she said it, I'm quite close.
That's not the downtown organization's mission, it's for marketing promotions. This three thousand dollars is something that, um, we have budgeted year after year to take care of the banners. That's our city responsibility. We just purchased brand new banners to do in any time after the winter. We'd like to get some seasonal for the, the summer. That's not, anything has anything to do with downtown organization, there's no connection there.
I, I'm more interested in the, uh, all our funds. We authorize them to give thirty thousand dollars to the, uh, N D C for their director for salary. They didn't have a director most of the year. Are we leaving that for the future director, or should we get some of that money back?
Those funds go to the downtown organization to support the downtown, um, designation. The designation has been, um, utilized for the YOBA studio, the UPS building, the work comments, and, uh, paper shop over the years. So your investment of sixty thousand dollars a year has come back to the, as it probably goes. Um, there is a recruitment underway, the funds are supported to the organization, not necessarily for a certain person.
And I believe that, I believe that what we did to motion was push back, of course.
The downtown organization will be coming up with our annual report, and the city will be giving a copy of that. So what we've got in our balance, and what's showing, is six thirty nineteen for the hundred and seven thousand. We received two payments from Lora, hundred thousand each. Thirty thousand of that has been used, um, for what it said that it would go to.
So it's used for salary?
It has not been used for salary, it is still in the account.
Still in the account.
It has not gone to waste.
Did you have something? No. Oh, I, 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 I had to get that, I had to get it. Do you need to stand with that? I have a question. Is that too late for you?
No, it's not too late. All right, any other questions? Then we would need a motion to accept this presentation, depending on circumstances.
How much is that, please, when?
As presented?
Is there a second? Motion made second, any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? No, the motion carries. Moving on, new business, Mr. Johnson.
We got two little licenses that need to be approved. Used to be third class license, went back to from the, uh, merchant, the liquor department now, it's called, it's called. You have the choice of paying for it for a year, or you work six months at a time. Both these licenses are six months at a time. One is for the warehouse, and the other is the ladder. So it just needs to be issued on the bottom, motion to approve, you have a plan.
Can you explain what exactly third class license is? And assuming that these are renewals and there's nothing different in these applications than has already existed?
This is definitely a review. This is definitely second act, so they're already, so they're already a third class license.
And what is third class?
Third class mainly serve on call.
Test.
Thank you, Jessica. I believe we're the second class, we're all we sold for, package towards third class and, I got all that, total.
Do we have a motion or does it say?
It's on.
Okay. Any other business, just got, Mr. Johnson?
New business. On the Borderline Midrivers Facebook page on October 19th, they posted, Scott and I posted Derby Newport Light of the Night Parade, December 7th. Our ATV community has been invited to participate in this great event to help the Northeast Human Council on Aging. Parade started from Montague Dairy Factory, located at 84 Fairland Street in Newport, and Junior High School on Main Street in Derby. Right at 5:00 AM, lineup parade starts at 6:00 PM sharp. Here's one, another event, that has company attention of the council via roots that really shouldn't be. This whole event policy business has been dragging on for months and months and months. Obviously hasn't been finalized, because a new policy is not coming for the council. The last time we had this issue, I believe the argument was that, oh, we don't have a policy anymore, therefore we don't need to go to the council for proof for anything. And that is ridiculous, and once again, I object to the process. The council needs to be informed of what's going on in the city.
Well, I was just going to say, regarding the event policy, they were waiting to have one more meeting. Mine was going to wait to have one more meeting to conclude the policy and bring it to the council. That was the last thing I understood, is they wanted another meeting to go over the final draft for the council to review. And people were left in the dressing room.
Yeah, I had some chair, and we had moved along, you know, over the summer, school gave a session, it became a little bit of a schedule problem going on with members, and we felt that we needed to have the representation there. Other cases, we've been criticized in the past for, you know, not, what, I'm just criticizing the past, it's related to that. So we are waiting to be able to accommodate one of our members, who, two of our members actually, who have very busy schedules, and we want to be sure we have the best representation on the recreation community, so that we don't go under that criticism of the other.
I have one of the problems, when the virus school started, with that. One of the things that Julie said is absolutely true. We never had a policy, it always came to the council. We had a one-year trial policy, and to use that as an excuse that you can't come to the council anymore doesn't make any sense to me. Because there's nothing happening now that didn't happen before, that's our policy.
Anything else? Just. Oh, another thing, before we go on, seeing that was on Facebook, I can't get anything on the other parade, so that's just my opinion.
That's, that's a good choice, Mr. Mayor. So we actually made contact with the parade organizers, this was a continuation of a parade that was held last year in Derby. Ian Kelly, I believe is her name, the organizer of this, she can actually approach the recreation department and see if that was something that could be done in Newport. They didn't have very good attendance up at the earlier jury, and suggested that maybe if it was a little bit longer, there might be some more interest. They reached out to us, I asked her to give me a chance to connect with the department heads, as is the usual routine, before we had the policy, during the time that we had the policy, and I remember it was soon to probably make the case out there, but we'll see how that pans out. I did send an email to our department heads, everyone was very busy, and I didn't get a response. They checked and they handed it in, I said, let me try it one more time. They opted to move on with the parade in Derby, instead of waiting for us to report, instead of, we'll check it out next year, we have a little bit more time to figure it out. So the last that we had heard was that they were going to have this event in Derby, so finding out on social media that it was going to be in Newport, just means that we need to check and see what's up. Could be they asked them if it was in the wrong location, maybe they lost some of their plans beforehand, and haven't had a chance to revise. But I do believe with the Borderline Midrivers, we're doing this as a positive gesture, and nothing malicious here, so it's going to matter of figuring out what the issue is, I think is the first step, instead of going on to make any other assumptions.
I have the old business, and new business, new business, new business. Mr. Johnson, old business. Mr. Shablon, Mr. Jerome, old business, I have the old business, old business. Okay, the next city council meeting will be Monday, November 4th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the city council room. Now I need a motion to adjourn at 8:38. Motion made, just second, second, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, we're adjourned.